We'd like to welcome everyone to this discussion of jail location here in Monroe County. We have invited multiple guests to be with us here tonight, and so go ahead and we'll get this meeting started. And do you have anything that you'd like to add, President Wiltz?
No, thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to ask Jeff Cockrell to come up and introduce DLZ, please. And I will point out that both Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Jones have heard this presentation before, so I think they're more interested in what the other individuals have to share with us.
Yeah, and I thought I'd give a brief background on how we got to where we're at. I think everybody knows that about this time last year, we had worked focused on a site, the Fortin site, and that was after meetings, executive sessions with the council and the commissioners, getting ready to move forward, met with the city, found some resistance. So we had to kind of pull back a little bit and kind of regroup and look for other places to go. And so when we did that regroup, we, staff came up with several options of things to look at, met an executive session with the sheriff, the council, and the commissioners, and first time we narrowed it down to four sites. Then we had DLZ do kind of a brief overview of those four sites, came back to the council, commissioners, and sheriffs again for a second meeting. I think when we went through those, we determined that really one of the sites wasn't going to work because of where it's located and its size. And so following that, before we had this meeting, we wanted to get some input from the city council specifically. And so I think a couple of weeks ago, the commissioner and a council member went and met with the city council to talk about the two sites that were in the city limits and get their impressions on that. And they, to report back to the group, I think the preference they indicated was for the Thompson site as opposed to the Hopewell site. I think they had five members there, and all of them expressed that preference, some more strongly than others, but all were pretty strong in that preference. And so that's kind of setting up for tonight. I think tonight, what we want to do is we wanted to have something where the public could see, you know, what we're looking at, and then hear the conversations afterward. So I'm going to introduce Scott Carnegie and his colleague from DLZ to kind of just go through those four sites, give, you know, kind of pros and cons to each site, and then, you know, let the discussion ensue.
Thank you.
Well, welcome, Mr. Carnegie. Your colleague here.
Yes, thank you. Scott Carnegie with DLZ, project manager. With me this evening is Jeff Hirsch, registered landscape architect, site planner for DLZ. So as Jeff mentioned, we did look at four different sites, just from an overall initial site evaluation. And Jeff is going to do the majority of speaking here in just a moment, but in a nutshell, we looked at North Park, we looked at Hopewell, we looked at Thompson, and we looked at a site to South Monroe Hospital. So those are the four sites that Jeff's going to walk you through, these images that are up on the screen.
Okay. We'll start with the North Park site. That's what you have on the screen right now. For each of these sites, we looked at various aspects, just from a kind of a high-level overview, looking at the parcel size, looking at the zoning, looking at the surrounding context, availability of existing utilities. And so on each of these, you'll see different color-coded line types in the legend, and those identify the different utilities. You'll see points of access to the sites, which are identified by the red star shape. And then you'll see an bold yellow outline, and that is the parcel limits that we studied. So I'll just walk through each four of these so you can see them. The first site, which was the North Park sites, just a little bit over 100 acres, located along State Road 46. There's a two-point, there's one point of access, an existing curb cutoff of State Road 46, on the east side of the parcel. You can see, and then another access there comes from the south, from a new roadway that's been constructed a little bit off of the image limits. But you can see the surrounding context, two-story, or two-family residential, suburban agriculture pretty much, surrounding this parcel with some general commerce, and the site is zoned heavy industrial. The red areas that you see on the map are areas that are, that have been determined based on the LiDAR topography to be 15% or greater slopes. So there's limitations to development on those slopes. Available utilities, you can see, there's an electrical utility that does cross this site, and other utilities are surrounding, so seems to be in pretty good shape as far as utilities go.
If I could, just real quick, just as a point of clarification, that white footprint that you see in there, that's only there as a point of reference to give you some sense of scale, and that happens to be the Hamilton County jail footprint. The only reason I selected that is because I know that some of you have toured Hamilton County, so that'll give you some point of reference. We're not saying that the building footprint is going to be shaped like that, we're not saying that the building's going to be located there, we just put it there for graphic scale.
Thanks, Scott. So if we go to the next site, this is the Hopewell site, or former hospital site, as you all know it. So this site is approximately 20 acres, and that takes into account all of the different parcels you see in yellow. There are some slopes on the site.
One reference I wanted to say while we're kind of doing this, if everyone can make sure they speak into their mics so that everyone watching can hear both here in the room and beyond.
I'll also note for the record that Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Jones are now in the room with us, so thank you.
Okay, so the site with the recent hospital demolition has been regraded, so some of the red areas that you see adjacent to the parcel are...
Pause, we need to wait for the image to get caught up.
Oh, okay. Oh, I think it might have skipped ahead. So some of the red areas that you see on this map, in the corner, still exist with an existing building that's staying, but where the hospital was currently torn down, that has been regraded, so it's a little bit different than what you see on this image. As far as utility availability, basically everything was surrounding the site. However, it was only 20 acres in size. The next site that we looked at is the Thompson site. This site's approximately 90 acres. You can see there are several overhead utility power lines that do cross this site. There are a couple of large areas with the slopes that are over 15%, but there's, appears to be sufficient land for the development that needs to occur, if you can, based on the scale and then the size of the site, it's more than adequate. There was one parcel in the northeast quadrant, or not really, northeast quadrant of the larger area of the site, at the end of Strong Drive, that would need to be purchased in order to provide access to the parcel. And then there are potential future access points to the west. You can see an area of future development plans that, where there could be some roadway connections to the west. The last site that we studied is the South Monroe Hospital site, is what we called it. It was just at 25 acres. This parcel had a couple areas of slopes over 15%, but it was identified that the site had been previously graded. So some of those slopes in the center where the building footprint is were man-made. So really, the only natural one was down in the southwest corner of the site. So it had a single point of access past the hospital, and really was, had the utilities, but probably a little small for the site that you're looking for, so. Anything else to add, Scott?
No, I think that's it.
Any questions? I went over that awful fast.
Are there questions from my colleagues? I will note that for the Thompson site, that we would have to get rezoning from the city on that to keep it there, but I know that it is also the desire of many of the city officials to retain the jail and anything that we collate within the city because of the commerce that it brings to the city itself.
I guess so. Just looking at the Thompson property, along with the slope indications, it looks like there's maybe four distinct developable areas, so the jail could possibly be in any of those, and possibly leave room for, of course, co-location of court services for potential other treatment facilities. Is that kind of a thought?
Yes, I think so, and, you know, there's also, you know, possibility, I would say, exists for discussions with the utility companies about if some, you know, we don't know if, you know, a couple of those overhead lines could maybe be consolidated or pushed to one side, we don't know that yet, but that would be an opportunity to explore.
And so is there any potential use for that, for the egress and entrance from Rogers, or is that just so congested with utility easements that there's really no use at all?
It would probably be difficult to get access to Rogers, yes.
It could be used for emergency access, construction access? Yeah, so I have been down there, I've walked and I've looked at it. Growing up here, I've always known I was there. It is pretty congested, but as an emergency, you know, point of access to a facility, something like that, I think we could probably sneak a drive-through there. Thanks.
And just to orient ourselves, this, that, the entrance in question is right across Rogers Street from the entrance to Switch Yard Park, is the way I understand that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And so that places it pretty close to a lot of the nonprofits and other services that are in downtown Bloomington, whether it's via the B-line or whether it's via Rogers Street. That's pretty close?
Fairly close, yes.
Okay.
Given...
Push it down in. There, try it now.
I'm sorry. Given where you have placed the location of the jail, would there be room for it to be expanded in the future?
Yes, absolutely. And just to reemphasize again, we placed it somewhere on the site. It could be, you know, some other location, we just put it there for graphic scale, but if you look on that image, kind of the lower right-hand corner, that box right there, that's the general population housing area. And typically, when we lay out a facility on the site, we always try to leave enough space where we could duplicate that again if we had to. And then the core services of a facility, that being intake booking, kitchen, laundry, things like that, we always try to upsize those to accommodate a future expansion, so we don't have to come back in and renovate those in the future.
I actually didn't hear what you said about the city with respect to this property. I was wondering if you could say it again.
We will need to get this area rezoned, I think. We'll have to double-check that, but...
Rezone may be the right process, but this isn't a PUD. The PUD allows for a use of the jail. It also has some requirements that probably don't make a lot of sense, given what we know is going to develop in the area. For instance, the PUD requires if we build a building that we have to build a road that essentially connects Adams Street, is my memory, and since the development next to it's already got that in the plan, so we need to go and get some of that cleaned up. And there's probably other things we need to clean up, but it certainly would involve amending that PUD in order to make this as cost-effective as possible. I know we were looking at Strong Road, and there were things that we were wanting to see done with that road. It sounds like, I talked with a representative from one of the companies in the area, and that Strong Road, I think they've already removed the parking from one side of the road, and so, you know, that was another thing that we had in mind, and they're just, part of the process is figuring out what can go there and how it fits with that PUD. We know we'll have to get it amended some way or another, and it's just kind of figuring out all those. That's kind of the next step in the process with whatever property you guys choose, is that we'll do a deeper dive, figure out what the zoning is, figuring out, you know, what changes need to be made to that in order to accommodate, if any, and things like that. That's kind of the next step in the master planning type process.
I have a question for Jeff Cockrell, and maybe that was a part of your answer, because I didn't hear your question, Penny. But years ago, when the county bought this and went to the city, a county commissioner at the time pledged to take utilities all the way through the 80-some acres at the time we did the second building. So I just, as a reminder, I want to make sure that's no longer a portion of what we're agreeing to.
We have to go get that PUD amended, and that's one of the things we'd look at as we go through the process, what, you know, what fits what we're going to do there, and how does that deviate from what's in the PUD? I think that my memory, the road connection of Adams was one of the big, was one of the big expenses we were looking at when we were looking at that property, and that's being taken care of through another development that I'm aware of, or at least it's proposed to. So we would have to look at what we're going to do there, and then go to the city to amend the PUD so it fits with what we want to do. I think the sheriff, a couple of counselors, and I met with some city representatives, including the head of the planning department, and we're talking through some of these things, and they seemed like they would be very cooperative with us in what we're doing. And, you know, we still have to make sure it makes sense in the grand, in the bigger scheme of things, but I think they were willing to work with us and express that at that
If we could stay on the topic of the proposed neighborhood, which is identified here on the screen on the west side by a bunch of blobs, that neighborhood's not built yet. Do we know how far along it's going to be until that neighborhood, or that construction begins? If we don't, that's...
Either take the lavalier mic or yeah.
I don't have the full answer to that, but I know that Phase 1 has been started, and I believe Phase 2 has begun, and they've already began to do some of the work for that in that area.
Okay. And just, it's really small print, but there's multi-use family as well as multifamily assisted living in there, so that'll be an interesting neighborhood right there.
So is the, am I to understand that the areas marked in red are absolutely off-limits for development, or just that it would cost more and require more mitigation?
It's an area that would not, development would not be allowed, yeah, unless you get a variance, so...
That's per the current county ordinance, correct?
City ordinance.
City ordinance, I'm sorry.
Well, I think the city ordinance places a, like a 50% buildable within, if it's between, I think, 12 and 18.
I think it was between 12 and 18, it was 50%.
50%.
Yeah.
One of the things that, again, not telling you what site to choose, but, you know, I was asked to prepare, well, what if we did here, or here, or here? One of the things we would look at is whether that, the red area is something that was man-made or not, because that may help or may help us understand the natural, how things are in that area or not, and work with the city planning if that's something that we think, as we go through the master planning process that we want to do. I think we are going to explore whatever site we choose with environmental review and all those kind of things. And so part of what we'd want to do is, you know, do some geotechnical stuff on any sites, and kind of explore why is it there, what's there, and see if, really if that makes sense for it to stay there or not from an ecological standpoint as well.
So the property just north of the Thompson property that would need to be acquired, do we know anything about that property? Was it examined by you, for instance? Is it for sale? Do we...
I've reached out to the owner a few months ago, it's not anything recent, and I explained to them, you know, kind of what we're looking at, what we want to do, and I told them, you know, the, you know, all our restrictions on when we purchase things, and that didn't seem to alarm them. The only feedback is they have a, I think it's cell tower or something like that on it, that they have leased out through a period of time, that we'd have to probably work with them on that. Again, we didn't sign any documents or anything like that, so, you know, their attitudes are always, could always change, but that was kind of the conversation I've had with them. So they were aware and are aware that we were looking at that. My personal opinion, if you care to have it, is that whether we do this project at this site or not, the fact that we own all the rest of it, and that's going to be the primary access point, it may make sense to maybe move forward with that either way, just to make the rest of the property more accessible for whatever is chosen in the future.
So at this point, I would like to invite Sheriff Marte to give us his reaction to these different sites. I know you and your staff have been out, you've walked some of the different ones, and we'd like to hear from you.
We took some time and discussed at length with the team, referenced which location will be benefits us, and how we could perceive that in the future, when we're not here, our replacement will capitalize on that location. And the best one for me, as personally went and took a tour, was Thompson. One is, the restriction that we have now is size. We just don't have the space to do what we know we could do better job is because of the size, and Thompson site provides that to us. Obviously, we have to be very cost-effective, and I understand that, but right now, where we stand, you know, the Judd where now has outlived his resources that it could provide at this point. One of the things that concerns me the most right now, if that, if the elevator breaks down, now we, you know, we have to struggle with that, and when I truly tell you that it breaks down frequently, it does. And we have to provide meals, three meals a day, and then that means we gotta use the stairs. So I just say that to tell you this, is that with, what we thought of with the Thompson area is that, you know, we won't make the mistake that we made before having built on top of another floor. The other thing is, it kind of gives us, and I can't speak for the other agencies, but it kind of gives the opportunity to coexist. It's, it would be very helpful to have the courts right beside us there as well, and that location gives us that opportunity if it decided to be done. The other thing that I've heard other people talk about is the treatment center. That's a wonderful idea, and if that is going to come to fruition, that site again will give you that opportunity. So I know we have to be mindful of course effect, however, you know, we have to think about what is our goal? If our goal is to actually help people before they get to the facility, then we need to have the tools to do that. So I won't be long-winded, but for me, as I think about all the positive things that we can accomplish right now, this location in my mind is the best location.
Thank you. Judge DeKoff, do you have any words to share with us?
As we, as the Board of Judges has discussed in the past, the biggest concern for us is to be co-located and to have the new facility as close to the services of the people who we service, that we, that are involved in the system are close to. Thompson of these options seems to us to be the best option for that. We're going to be located in a place that is still going to be close to service providers, it's closer to downtown, it's in a place that we can, we can be, as I understand it right, we can eventually be co-located there because there's going to be enough room to do that. And obviously, what the sheriff believes is feasible and possible for the sheriff impacts us because of the transportation that we're going to have to deal with, obviously, since the jail's going to be built first, and then the rest of us would follow, I would imagine. So our opinion would be, would be the Thompson site-based department ones that have been presented here this evening. Thank you.
I will point out that we've invited a number of other people to join us this evening, and unfortunately, the city is having its budget, part of its budget hearings this evening, and I actually spoke with Council President Sue Scambolari yesterday, and she wanted to make sure that we reiterated what Mr. Cockrell said, that their preference, if it goes inside the city, is for the Thompson property. And I assured her I would make sure that that was stated. I do not know if either Jimmy Dernell, Jill Leese, or Paul Booker have joined us tonight. If so, if you are here, would you please come up and share your opinion with us? I don't see anyone. The sheriff assures me they're not here. It's unfortunate that you see them on a regular basis, but okay. And I know that Chief DeKoff also had to present tonight at city council, so it's not the best timing, we'll put it that way.
Excuse me. Commissioner Githens, I do see somebody from the office of the mayor out in the audience, I don't know.
If they want to make a comment during public comment, they can.
Oh, I thought they were a part of the group of people that were...
No, the mayor specifically.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Because we were looking to have elected officials with us specifically. Thank you. And that's good to raise that with everyone. Appreciate that. So at this point in time, are we in agreement to hear some public comment? Okay, so if people wish to make public comment, can they come up and share your mic? And please sign in, we have a sign-in sheet if it can be passed down. And we'll be taking comment online also, and remind people that we, this is specifically for the sighting of the jail, and that we have a timeline of a limit of three minutes. So please state your name and whether or not you are a Monroe County resident. So, please state your name, and whether or not you are Monroe County resident.
Um, good evening. My name is April Wilson, and I work for the Monroe County Prosecutor's Office. I'm here today on behalf of the, of the Monroe County Prosecutor's Office to share a few suggestions to assist the county council and the commissioners in this very difficult process. In considering each of these three proposed locations, I apologize, I didn't realize there was four until this evening, um, we hope that co-location, transportation, and proximity to services is strongly considered. Separation of courts, attorney offices, probation, or any place where a defendant is required to report creates new barriers to participation. These obstacles will not only be shared by all parties, but by victims, victim support networks, and defendant support networks. Additionally, separation of these offices in the jail may result in significant fiscal impacts that will result in expenditure of funds on transporting an inmate to court, rather than expenditure of funds on needed services like treatment. Transportation challenges also impact defendants and their families directly. The jail is open 24 hours a day and seven days a week. This means at times, members of our community are released at night, in the cold, on holidays, and at times, the traditional bus route does not run. Of particular concern for any jail site is adequate, well-lit pedestrian walkways. Without these, we risk the safety of some of our most vulnerable community members. We hope in the future that there will be additional conversations that provide an opportunity for those not at the table this evening, to be able to share their thoughts on the proposed jail locations. In particular, we note the absence of our colleagues from the Public Defender's Office on the invitee list for this evening. In these conversations, if the Prosecutor's Office is present, the Public Defender's Office should be given that same opportunity. We'd like to extend an invitation to each county council member and the commissioners to join our office during a court session, and are always open to continuing to this, this conversation and answering your questions. I appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Wendy Goodlett. I am...
Has to be turned on, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Goodlett. I am a resident of Monroe County. I'm also president and CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Monroe County, and a parent of two former Summit Elementary students. Habitat builds homes, communities, and hope. Homes. We're in the process of building homes adjacent to the Thompson property just to the south. Six families have closed and begun paying on their mortgages. We have two homes nearing the end of construction, and three additional homes with foundations. When we're done building on South Bernard Drive, there will be 30 tax-paying families living in Osage Place. Our plan is to begin Phase Two infrastructure next spring, which will allow us to partner with an additional 39 families. When Osage Place is fully built, there will be 69 tax-paying families living there. Communities. The reality of Osage Place could not have been possible without the tremendous support of this community, including a donation of four acres from the county, significant financial support from private donors in the city of Bloomington, and the allocation of federal funds by the county. The community celebrated with Habitat when we broke ground at Osage Place in 2021. On an ongoing basis, the community comes together to teach classes to Habitat families, work as budget partners, fundraise, and volunteer to physically build the houses. In the process, we are helping families build their own neighborhood community, and demonstrating that they have value as part of the larger community of Bloomington and Monroe County. Hope. All Habitat families are members of one or more marginalized populations because of their income, the type of job they hold, their level of education, their race, their gender, their sexual orientation, and/or their nationality. Can you imagine the kind of hope that is instilled when a group of 25 strangers, expecting nothing in return, shows up on a Saturday morning to help a future homeowner build their house? Can you imagine how that hope grows and multiplies when they go home and share the story with their children? Why does all of this matter? Because the decision of where to place a jail is extremely difficult, and could have unintended consequence, consequences if it is misplaced. Building a jail on the Thompson property would once again marginalize the families that we have all worked so hard to lift up. It will marginalize the children who attend Summit Elementary. It will be a concrete daily reminder that they are vulnerable, because we would not be having this conversation if the county-owned land was adjacent to a wealthy neighborhood. I implore you to include all neighbors of the Thompson property as part of the discussion before you make a decision. That will mean extra effort and accommodations. Most of the people living in proximity to your land do not have the time to sit through an hours-long meeting for three minutes of public comment. They do not have the networks to advocate and fight on their behalf, and they do not have the financial resources often needed to effectuate change. Your actions will impact whether we behave as a community that inspires hope, or one that perpetuates the systemic inequities that have brought us to our current condition, where the need for affordable housing is greater than our desire to provide it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who wish to speak? I don't, I don't see anyone online either with their hand raised, so. So, one of the things I was hoping that we would move forward on this evening is whether or not the, we should start to dig deeper into one particular site, whether or not we should have some of the geotechnical work done, uh, whether we should move forward, not necessarily to say this is exactly the site, but to move forward with the next step. So, I'd love to hear the comments from my colleagues. And if so, where that, you think that site should be?
I have a question. Uh, and I don't know the answer to this, or I wouldn't ask the question. Did the county ever do stone borings there when we purchased the property? I know I requested it to be done. I'm not sure it was ever done.
She asked if there had ever been stone borings done at the Thompson site, and I do not have the history.
They do, that's what you do before you build.
Right, I don't have the history, uh, to know if that was done.
I, I'm unaware of that happening. I, I will tell you that I do have a quote for a geotechnical firm if we wanted to do that at that site. Um, but I think we wanted to have a meeting where you guys directed which site to go to before we started spending any, uh, any county dollars. So, I am not aware of any previously done borings.
Mr. McKim?
I, I guess in answer to your question, Commissioner Githens, I would like to take the next step and move forward on, uh, the Thompson site, which, you know, includes talking to the neighbor, hurt neighbors, doing the geotechnical work, uh, and then also, I, I would assume that this, uh, working with the city to ensure that the, um, the development of the Summit Place, uh, PUD is, is harmonious with our needs, uh, that we get the, the roads built in the right place, and that we're able to kind of create the right interface between the, the two, the two properties.
Councilwoman Munson?
I would also like to have a decision, uh, as to which property we are ready to invest in, uh, carrying out the, uh, geotechnical work, because that is expensive, and the other aspects that Counselor McKim raised are also important, and they do have a cost. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm trying to take some notes here, Counselor Iverson.
It's fine. Yeah, I, I would also like to move forward with having environmental and geotechnical assessments done on the Thompson site, uh, along with, uh, appraisals. And I, I think my rationale is, is twofold. Number one, uh, we heard last night from the Sheriff's Department that there's just simply no room for the programming that we keep hearing from the community that we want to have. Uh, and, and there's, there's a lot of issues with the building, and I won't go through the litany of the, the Sheriff's presentation again. Uh, not only would I not do it justice, but, uh, we also had it recorded last night. So, I, I think moving forward, uh, as, as expeditiously as possible is important. A- as it stands now, due to the timelines, uh, that we, uh, associate with the different phases, we probably will not be moving into a new site until around 2028, uh, if that, everything moves, uh, forward. So, I think the sooner that we move forward, uh, the better. And, and then my, my second point is, what, the other thing that we know is that square footage is really important in, uh, coming up with an estimate of, of cost for a facility, or a series of facilities, or a series of phases of building facilities, and, and getting to that point is, I think, very important for me. I, I'm really interested to know. Uh, and of course, that's downline quite a ways, but this is a good first step.
I agree with, uh, Counselor Iverson in, um, moving forward on the Thompson property, and the reasoning being similar. Um, it's become apparent over the past months, year or so, that a new jail is necessary. The current site is not something that's feasible, and, um, of the sites that have been, uh, looked at, presented to us, Thompson is, is, fits the bill to the greatest extent. Um, we need space, not because we need more inmates. We need space because we want the quality of life for folks who are incarcerated to improve. And to Counselor Iverson's point on timing, we need to, we need to be moving on this. This, this is something that can't, we can't just keep talking. We need to start taking some action on a number of fronts, programming-wise, as well as getting folks into a, a place that's more habitable.
Either one of you?
You go ahead.
I guess as we are thinking about the new sites, um, in, in particular Thompson, and, and thought of cost, I, I don't know, this is just a thought, and this is something that we can put down for, just, and going forward, would it be easier to build everything all at once, so that everybody can co-locate at the same time, so therefore, we are not having to go back and forth between the soon-to-be-old site to the new site? Because that, to me, right there, would provide cost and/or safety concerns for correctional officers and sheriff deputies that would have to go back and forth. It's not far, but anything can happen in that certain timeframe. So, I guess for me personally, if we are thinking about next steps, cost, as me being in the lane of county council, is something that I would definitely be thinking about.
Thank you. Councilwoman Decker?
I remember when this discussion all started, I remember thinking at the time how difficult this is going to be because of location, and all the things that go with that. Um, and, and I think we've watched some iterations of what was first proposed, and some obvious issues that were raised on that, and I think we've heard tonight on each of these locations, some obvious, uh, pros and cons. And what I'm hearing from, if I'm listening to the sheriff and Judge DeKoff correctly, is that there is a location that has a preference, and we have other considerations that have to be taken into account to get to that preference of the Thompson site. And my kind of point is, uh, with all this, that if we don't, if we don't fully know the, the, um, the geological concerns, pardon me, geotechnical, I'm not saying it right, or environmental, all that could be moved anyway. And so, to me, the logical next course of action is to determine all of that, and to have that knowledgeable information, to take into account the comments that we've heard this evening. No doubt, we will hear continued comments, but to get that information so that we can take the public through a well-informed decision on this. Uh, and more informed than not is better.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilmember Hawke, did you have anything that you'd like to add to the discussion in terms of your preference for whether or not we should go forward in looking at the Thompson property?
I think the group needs to be, received all this information. We don't know the cost of building there. That's always been my holdback for Thompson property, because we knew there were so many stone outcroppings, and because of the commitment that the commissioners at the time had made, saying we would do utilities all the way across 80-some acres, and you try to, and I just hope that goes away, because that is going to be a very expensive, expensive proposition. I mean, we know that we, what it takes to put in sewer lines. And so, I mean, that, that's my biggest concern. Now, we may have that wherever we go, so I think we have to make a first step to see whether or not we're going to be held to that original, uh, promise, if it was a promise, if it was some kind of an agreement, and what it's going to really cost to move through there, and I think it's going to take, you know, I call it stone borings because, oh, in real estate, back in the 1970s, we called it stone borings. Maybe it's called something else now. So that you see if you're building on limestone and have to blast through and so forth. But I think that's a part of what we're working on right now, just getting more information, so.
In my mind, it's just the next phase of what we have to do to move forward, so.
Right, I, I understand that.
It doesn't, it doesn't lock us in.
I already promised I wasn't going to say anything, so. That's not on me, she made me.
Commissioner Thomas is, or Commissioner Jones, is there anything that you wish to add to the discussion we've had tonight?
I just want to make sure that we really include the neighbors and pay attention to their concerns, which are very valid. And, uh, I just don't want that to be shoved aside.
Uh, I, I agree, um, listening to Sheriff Marte and, um, Judge DeKoff, um, regarding their preference, that means a great deal. Um, and I think we do need more information, and so I'd be okay moving ahead to get more information, but I also agree that we have, uh, people we need to listen to, and we can be, um, really proactive about that, and go to the neighborhood, and, and go knock on doors, and, uh, have a meeting at Summit or at the library in the south side, and really, you know, reach out and, and, um, and get that feedback, um, and do what we can. I think, um, the slopes and, um, will, will afford us some leeway in providing, uh, some separation, um, but I want to see where, where things land and what we need to do with the city. Um, and of course, as we told the city council members that we spoke with a few weeks ago, we're going to need their help, and, um, and we made them well-aware of that, that, that they're going to be part of this process, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Crowe?
Um, I was going to add to the point of, uh, Commissioner Thomas kind of said something that made a light bulb go off. Um, in terms of really making sure that we are listening to the neighbors, obviously, we heard public comment where, um, you know, people are feeling some type of way, um, a- about it. I know in the past, when, you know, proposed sites, or when the new talk of jail were coming around, and how there were listening sessions that were had, and we were going to people where they were, um, I think it would be a really good idea for us to continue on that same pathway of going to people where they are, because if we do have marginalized community members in that particular area, um, instead of having a session where they're...
of having a session where we're here and they can't come here because they are there and they have other obligations, it would be nice for us to, you know, go to folks where they are and have, you know, listening sessions in the area and multiple ones, kind of how like the county is doing the UDO things right now. That would be very helpful. And I know, my last point is, I know that there has been talks of, you know, this potential or Thompson having a potential site of us maybe having mental health treatments and substance use. Really, that is something that is, I'm sure everybody here is very passionate about, but I'm definitely wanting us to really think outside the box and really think of different ways besides just one-track mind into going into building a new facility. I think that's where we are going, but to me personally, that's just a point that I just want to continue to drive to, as we move forward with things.
I think that there is sufficient land at both North Park and at Thompson to build a separate facility, one that would have some separation from a jail. So I think either of those would allow us to do exactly that, and I think that there are several of us in the room who would like to see that happen. If there are no other comments, I would like to adjourn the meeting. Early. When did that happen? Oh, my. Thank you, everyone who's shown up today and who's come out to join us.
Would you summarize exactly what the next step is?
Okay. Councilwoman Muntzen has asked me to summarize. The next step will be to do sort of a Phase II, and it sounds like the preference is for Thompson, and that'll be to get sort of some of this geotechnical work done, and this specifically addresses some of the work that Counselor Hawke raised. We will also start to work with our city colleagues on the zoning issues, and we will be calling upon our legal expert, Mr. Cockrell, to lead us in all of this.
And I just want to add, I just, what I heard today is that I should move forward with getting some geotechnical data, getting some appraisals, and then getting the environmental stuff going. I'm going to include in that, because in my mind, all those components have to go through an expert, so I'm going to include in that getting the DLZ master planning process contract going so that they can analyze that data and put them all in one document so that they all interact with each other, so everybody will know what the total picture is. So I just want to make sure that is the will of the group.
So I would like to have us add very specifically a socio-cultural impact statement where the data are collected in as rigorous a manner as the environmental data. And we've, it's been mentioned by multiple people here, the value in reaching out to the Osage neighborhood to learn their concerns and our responses to them.
Councilmember McKim?
Thanks. And then just to make sure that the following are also included, give everybody's take, working with the city to ensure, not just on the zoning for this PUD, but on the Summit Place PUD as well, to make sure that our, you know, our needs harmonize with theirs and that we can take advantage of infrastructure that they would be building. And then also, to get more detailed cost estimates, since, you know, if we're talking about not only a jail but relocation, you know, the sooner we get better estimates, we can start thinking about ways to fund both of those.
And I got caught in my quarantine, but I have received kind of a broad cost estimate for both the jail, and I'll forward that to you guys tomorrow because it's six thirty. And I'll get with Cheryl on the social...
Socio-cultural.
Cultural.
Assessment.
Figure out somebody who can do that, and we'll get quotes, and we'll go on that. But I guess the other part of that is reaching out with the neighborhoods and things like that. I guess my assumption is that is something that you as elected officials would do. I'll help set up in any way I can, but I think, are you thinking of kind of a meeting like this or something like this, maybe closer to the side or whatever you want? Just let me know.
Yes, Mr. Iverson? Okay. Well, with that, I think we are adjourned. And if you have other, oh, these mics are terrible. With that, we are adjourned, and if you have additional input, please email us or give me a call. Thank you, everyone, for showing up.